All right, we'll get down to business here. This is the June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. We welcome your attendance. Thank you for being here tonight, and we're glad you participating in our meeting. Thank you very much. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Van Tucker to do our invocation and our pledge. If you would, please stand.
Chairman.
I would pray. God, the grace is heavenly, Father. We thank you once again for the many blessings you've bestowed upon each and every one of us this day, this week, this life, for all the mercies and kindness and all the many blessings that we so seem or I seem so often to not pay much attention to. Oh, thank you for them, and I ask, Lord, that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves, that you watch over them. You have a lot of troubles in this world and this life, Lord, only by your grace and your strength. And we see your way to get through them, and we know and expect that you will provide that for us. So be with us tonight as we go through this meeting. Give us discernment, wisdom, courage, strength, integrity, truth, that the work of the people be done according to your will. For it's in your precious name, Jesus, I pray, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, you have your agenda for tonight's meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Mr. Goins to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a second? I have a second, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. You also have the meeting minutes on the fifth of June. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of June fifth, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion, Commissioner Tucker, to approve the meeting minutes from the fifth of June. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the meeting minutes from the fifth of June are approved. We also have a consent agenda tonight, and I'll call in the county manager to list those items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is the Tax Department end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports. Next is the U.S. four twenty-one interstate designation resolution. Next item is the workers' compensation renewal with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Fourth item, there are two position reclassifications, and the final item is Budget Amendment Number fifteen with end-of-year cleanup from the Finance Office. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, gentlemen, you have the consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by County Manager Chris Knopf.
I have a motion, Commissioner Tucker, to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the consent is approved. We also have two recognitions tonight. A couple of Eagle Scouts as well as Mr. Zim Zimmerman. If you would, gentlemen, please, let's go down front.
We'll start with Eagle Scouts. Jeremiah McMasters is here, okay. Our parents. Okay. Uh, y'all come right here, just standing right here. Hunt Jeremiah McMasters, Troop five sixty-one, is hereby presented as certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand and twenty-three, and for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop, and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Present this the nineteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Mary. Congratulations. Yeah, you won't say that's funny. I'll say that you want me to say it. Go ahead. Yeah.
So our son is not here to receive this award tonight because he went into the Air Force this week. So he's in basic training in San Antonio.
Very good.
He did a frisbee golf.
So, sorry, I didn't, prayer of speech. So he did a, his project was at Shoals Recreation, and he did a frisbee golf course. They created a hole and a putting area and cleaned out around that frisbee golf area, so.
It looks very nice.
And a bridge.
Thank you.
I'm real proud of him.
Bradley William Cogger. Bradley William Cogger, Troop five forty-five, is hereby presented as certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand and twenty-three, and for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop, and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Present this the nineteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Mary. Congratulations, brother.
Yes, unfortunately.
All right, so my project was not based in Dobson or Pilate, it was based in, it was based at First Christian Church in King. I built a couple of blessing boxes, which, for those who don't know, they are boxes where you donate food or other supplies into it so that people with, who are less fortunate, say, are less fortunate, can go buy and get them whenever. The goal was to try to make it self-standing, which is why after it was done, it was given to the church, which I have managed to work out with their multiple committees to keep it filled. After I got my initial donation of about sixteen hundred dollars, I used that to keep it full, and that money is still going strong, and the box is being used quite often.
Good, right. Good job.
Okay, proclamation from County of Surrey for Mr. Zim Zimmerman. Zim, if you would come up, you're welcome to bring Deborah with you. Deborah, or you can watch from the sides. Welcome. Hello, Deborah. I'm gonna have to get my glasses because this print is small. This is a proclamation from the County of Surrey celebrating Mr. William Taylor Zim Zimmerman the second. Whereas in nineteen seventy-five, Mr. Zimmerman completed for Gardner Web University, competed for Gardner Web University as a collegiate athlete on the men's golf team, received the National Association of Intercollegiate Athletics All-American Honor in both seventy-five and nineteen seventy-six, won NIA Men's National Championships in seventy-six and seventy-seven, and in nineteen eighty-one was elected to Class A membership of the PGA of America and was inducted into Gardner Web University Hall of Fame in nineteen ninety-one. Whereas Zim was named Head PGA Golf Professional at Cedar Brook Country Club in nineteen eighty-two, was named General Manager in addition to Golf Professional at Cedar Brook Country Club in two thousand and five, and is a golf professional at Cedar Brook Country Club, had numerous employees to later become golf professionals at other clubs, and whereas served as a dedicated coach to the Elkin High School Men's Golf Team for twenty-three years, served as coach to the Elkin High School Women's Golf Team for seven years, coached a student athlete to a state championship, and mentored numerous other students, athletes, who later played golf at the collegiate level. And whereas Zim was a proponent of and promoted the Tar Heel Youth Golf Association and organized annual junior golf camps at Cedar Brook Country Club for forty years, and whereas Zim has served as an active member of the Surrey County Tourism Development Authority since two thousand and sixteen, now therefore be it resolved that Surrey County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor Mr. William Taylor Zim Zimmerman the second for his achievements and contributions to Cedar Brook Country Club in Surrey County, adopted this the nineteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chair, Van Tucker, Vice Chair, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Marion. Congratulations, Zim. Very proud to do this. I want to say Zim had a very nice retirement celebration down in Elkin. About two, three weeks ago, the Liberty was full, and the community was very proud to honor Zim. He's an outstanding individual in our community. Cedar Brook has played an important role in Surrey County, particularly in the western end of Surrey County and the Elkin State Road area, attracting folks from all over the state, actually, to bring economic development and tourism to Surrey County and recreation. And we're very proud of what Zim's been able to accomplish over in Surrey County here, and we appreciate his service on the TDA, and very, very glad to honor Zim tonight. Outstanding gentleman as well, and Zim, if you would like to make some comments?
Chairman Harris, I appreciate all the kind words, and it's just an honor to be here. And I would like to say, first off, to Chairman Harris, his fellow commissioners, to Manager Chris Knopf, and the former commissioners, I'd just like to say thanks for what you have done in the past as for sports in this county, as for recreation in this county, as for high school athletics. I'm obviously a big believer that high school athletics and sports in young people is very, very important, and I just think it pulls a county together. So I personally would like to say thank you for what this board and former boards and commissioners have done towards that for this county. I would also like to say I appreciate the service and the hard work of these guys up here, these commissioners, for their service and time. It's a job that is very much, and has to be done, and I'm glad that there's people that steps up to the plate and is willing to take on this challenge, and I just appreciate what you've done for the great County of Surrey. Thank you.
Zim, we wish you both happiness in your retirement. Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Oh, come on, Deborah. Hello, ready, gents? Thanks, gents.
Okay, at this time, I'll call for our open forum portion of our meeting tonight. I will note that the public hearing for the county budget, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, county budget, there will be a public hearing for that. So if you're wishing to speak to the budget, you might want to wait until the public hearing for that. But at this time, I'll call for our regular open forum portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to come forward to, you know, any topic pertinent to Surrey County and this board or the citizens of Surrey County, please do so at this time and state your name and your telephone number, and I'll open the public forum. You might want to straighten that microphone out, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Jerry Olson. I live in Mount Airy. My telephone number is nine one oh five two four oh eight seven eight. My wife and I own Mount Airy Horse Stables and Mount Airy Horse Motel. We have fifteen horses we board, and we have overnight provisions for about fifty during the year. I'm here to represent a mare that was shot and killed this last Tuesday that we find very disturbing. Last Sunday, we were called by a resident on Asylum Road that there was a wild mare that was living in their woods and eating corn in their backyard. We were invited out to their house. We saw the circumstances. I went home and called my trainer in Wilmington, who actually is a professional Mustang trainer, does that for part of her living. She called the regional East Coast manager for BLM Sunday night, told him about my call. I'd called him, or he called me, eight thirty on Monday morning. We had a conversation about wild Mustangs. In this case, the horse was not causing any public disturbance. It was being fed by the owner in his backyard. It was living in the woods. It was peaceful, otherwise. It was eating corn, baby corn. We had a conversation about trying to identify whether or not it was a BLM horse. Supposedly it had a freeze tattoo on it. I secured later that day a picture of the horse, and throughout the day, they did some homework to find out whether or not it was one of theirs. If it was, it was federal property, and nobody's allowed to touch it. We proceeded with plans. The Mr. Harris, not Mr. Harris, but Mr., or his name is Dan, he told me the only way to catch a Mustang is to actually use a round pin and defeat it and attract it in and trap it. There is no other functional way to do that. We understood that from his advice. We proceeded with plans. We took out hay and feed and got permission from the owner to feed the animal in our backyard, in his backyard. We called the next day Animal Control to tell them that we would be happy to let them use our round pin if they didn't have one, and we proceeded to tell them that we'd be welcome to have the horse kept in our facility till somebody, the owner or BLM, would come and get it. The owner understood that the county was going to come out on Wednesday. Well, Tuesday afternoon at two o'clock, I got a call, and he said that the county came out and shot the horse. No effort was made to use the panels that the county owns and personnel that they had available to do that. That should have been the first thought of anybody trying to secure a horse that's not a public danger. It was eating corn and being peaceful. I'm available at any time for questions. We're here to serve the public. We volunteered our efforts to capture it, to house it, and to feed it. I'm not here to make money off of it, but we think that that was not handled properly, and we'd like to see something done. We just want to make sure you're aware of the circumstance, and we're going to keep pounding the drum, and we're here to make sure the animals are treated properly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public forum? Okay, no one else for public forum? I'll close the public forum of our meeting tonight, and I'll call in our county manager to, for his items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three add-on items which I'll address at the public hearing, but initially, the county commissioners have advertised this evening for a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The recommended budget, the county manager's recommended budget, was presented on June the fifth, two weeks ago tonight, and then subsequently, the board held a work session the following evening on June sixth. At the conclusion of the budget work session, the board reached consensus on several changes to the recommended budget. A detailed summary of those changes is available for each board member at their seat this evening. And this will, the one item that we didn't have a calculation on following the budget work session was the actual discussion with the Sheriff's Office about their wage study, but that has now been included, so you have that. I'll also mention that following the budget work session, there's an email there from Samantha Ames, our Health Director, describing a cut in grant funds to her department from partners, which is significant for her going forward. And I want to make sure you are aware of that. The information contained in that email, which is attached to this memo, will provide you what that shortfall will be for her in the Behavioral Health Section, and she is here this evening. If you have any questions, but that did come in, unfortunately, after the work sessions. That will need to be considered this evening by the board. And we're happy to answer any questions, but this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, before we get into the minutia, I will call for a public hearing on the proposed two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Surrey County budget. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak to the budget, I will open the public hearing at this time. State your name and telephone number.
Commissioner Harris, other commissioners. I'm Scott Natom, Commissioner in Pilot Mountain, and my number is three three six four 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 eight one one six. And I'm here to talk about the budget and the Armfield Center. In years past, this board has funded or supported the, well, really Nelson's Acres, because we did not own the Armfield Center at that time. We own, we had a town park, we still have a town park called Nelson's Acres. And now, we, we applied for a grant from the state and to purchase the park and the Armfield Center. And we reached out to the financial department here, and because we were doing our due diligence and we're wanting to know if we would get some support from, or further support from the county to, when we purchase this. And we were told that they were applicable, amiable to supporting us further, and we took that as above and beyond what you had in the past. And so, we, then, we purchased the property with that three hundred thousand, and we, we applied or asked for eighty thousand in this past, for this past budget in April. And then, I found out personally, I should have probably found out earlier, but that we, you have decided to do something interesting, and instead of directly paying for the support that you usually do, forgiving a part of a loan that we have for the Pilot Center. After calling each of you, and I really appreciate each person that got back to me's time and calling me, I really do. And I also want to say that I really appreciate your support of recreation in the county. I really do. And so, that forgiveness, our usual amount that we, that we get from you, and that forgiveness for, well, so I'm not really sure, this is a question for later. I'm not really sure if your forgiveness means that on the back end, and then we have to pay for the loan this year, or if that means we don't pay for the loan this year and then, but it's just forgiven for this year. I'm not sure about that. But it's not the same amount that we usually pay around twenty-four thousand, give or take, a year for that. And so that's not even the same amount that we usually get. And so, I'm asking this board to, at the bare minimum, support us the same as you have before in the past, and possibly, if, 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 if you're not interested in supporting a town park, which we were hoping that you would, I understand that Mount Airy is not supported with the Reeve Center, and, but this is a very special park in the way that we have home Surrey County games at this park, both high school and not just East Surrey. Almost all the, all the county schools host their, their swim meets there, which the county, the Surrey County Schools does chip in for, but it's not enough to really support the pool. But, and also for softball and the Little League in Pilot Mountain. When we have meetings with the Little League and we say, how many of you live here in town? It's crickets. It's all county people that are using this, this park. The whole corner of Surrey County is being, you know, hundreds of children use this park for all sorts of recreation. And so, I just feel like the difference between us and Elkin and Mount Airy, I think everybody here will know that we're a town of less than fifteen hundred people, and we're supporting a park that is a gym in the county. I mean, and half of the park is in the county, and the other half is just on the edge of the county. I realize the Pilot Mountain, the town owns it, but that's the way it is, and it's over, it's around a hundred acres that we're supporting and adding to. So that's my ask. Maybe as a compromise, maybe you would see fit to forgive all of that debt for the Pilot Center, and that would, that would help us. It wouldn't be what we were hoping for, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Natom. Anyone else to speak to the county budget? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for the county budget fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. And Mr. Knopf.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to move on to the three add-on items and come back to budget, or do you want to finish the budget discussion out this time?
Let's go ahead and do the add-on items. Yes.
I will need a motion from the board to amend the agenda to include three items. One from the county attorney related to Elkin City Schools and Duke Energy. The other two are from the Politeworks Director. One is regarding possible vehicle decals for convenience centers, and the other is a change order for the detention center project.
I'll make a motion to amend the county managers.
I have a motion, Commissioner Goins, to amend tonight's agenda to add three items from the county manager. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Marion, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we are amended.
Yeah, would you like to go first?
Sure. At the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, the Surrey County Board of Commissioners approved the Elkin City Schools to sell a tract of property at the high school to Duke Energy. The tract contained one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three square feet. And unbeknownst to anyone, that size tract was in violation of the town's zoning ordinance. In order to comply, they needed additional two hundred and forty-two square feet, and the school board attorney has asked- And the school board attorney has asked at this board, approve the Elkin School Board's conveyance of the rest of the footage to meet zoning requirements. I think that you have a handout indicating the plat, and I don't know that you have a color indication, but the original tract that we conveyed. Let me just walk around and show you. The original tract.
And this is adjacent to, this is over at the administration building, is that correct? It's not at the high school campus or the elementary school? Yeah.
I'd point out that the board unanimously made the first, or authorized the first conveyance.
Okay, do we need to handle these one by one yet? I'm assuming we do, is that correct? Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this Elkin City Schools additional tract of land that they need to satisfy the Elkin Town zoning ordinance?
It would be very interesting in your position, Mr. Chairman, since you reside in Hale from that area and you know the map here better than I do. And your opinion about the matter, as you say, in a district that you reside speaks volumes, so why don't you chime in?
This is former Duke property and they have infrastructure there still yet remaining. And I did meet with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, but she didn't mention this. But nevertheless, they need to satisfy the town zoning requirements. So I would be in, very much in support of this for sure. Yep. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion that we delay the 200 square feet, 240 square feet to authorize the school board to convey, authorize the school board to convey that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Gouins to allow the Elkin City School Board to convey the property. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tucker, seconds. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
All right, Jessica.
Good evening, sorry for the add-ons at the last minute. The change order for the detention center, the property committee has reviewed these. And the total for this change order number five is $151,320. It contains painting the rec yards, getting power to the, to the overhead doors, adding bollards to the 911 area, revising some security plumbing fixtures, actually a credit there, then exchanging it back on a fixture change in a toilet, adding hose bibs, changing exterior signage at CCOM and adjusting a couple of rooms to be non-contact visitation rooms for the attorneys. And that totals 151,320.
Okay, Commissioner Tucker, you want to address these? You're on the property committee.
I'll just say that, you know, this, when you build a 40-plus million dollar jail, expenses seem to have a trend upward, not downward. And as you get into these issues, we discover things. Sometimes I scratch my head and wonder why the architect and the engineers that we have hired didn't already figure it out and, and understand those needs. And then sometimes we make changes as we go along, like the safety of our attorneys. In this particular case, we had some of the judges in Surrey County that simply weighed in and said, look, we feel an obligation to, to provide ultimate safety for the attorneys that's going to be doing pre-trial conversations with these inmates. And we don't have, one room's not going to cut it. So I think we changed that to three rooms. And when we put in the walls, it's not just like putting up a drywall with a little insulation. You got to put stuff inside of that wall that the prisoner can't figure out how to break through or cut through or burn through. And so it's expensive. And then some of these other things were just aesthetics, these walls, these old brick walls that look like the primer that was put in was faded. I hated, we hated to build a 40-plus million dollar jail and then have some faded looking retaining walls on the outside, so I think it was reasonable. Mr. Chairman, I like all these suggestions and we have reviewed them. I don't think there's anything extravagant about them. And as, as a member of the finance, I would make a motion if the board would entertain it or if you would entertain it, that we would agree to these changes.
I'll get comments from the board before I'll entertain a motion. Anyone else care to comment on this?
So I'm, I'm good with all of them.
All right, Commissioner Johnson. Okay, all right, I'll entertain Commissioner Tucker's motion. I have a second, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
And the second item is something we get probably the most complaints about at the convenience centers, and I think you probably hear it as well, is out of county, out of state folks using the convenience centers. Currently, we have the convenience centers guys ask them if they live and reside in Surrey County, where does it come from? But it doesn't seem to be good enough. It really upsets folks that, you know, we take pride in our convenience centers. We have the landfill, we keeping prices low, we're keeping the county clean. We're, you know, we've added the roadside litter pickup. We want to make sure that that money is staying in Surrey County, that you pay the taxes for those convenience centers and those use. So we're, we're thinking about implementing the convenience center decals. These were used last, I think in the late 90s. And a lot of counties are taking and bringing these back. So I'm not sure if you've seen this, but this is a replica of what they would have. And it's not like a real sticker. It's almost like the cleans that you use for oil changes.
Yep.
So it won't damage the vehicle or anything, but.
It's not sticky, it just sticks on your glass and it'll pull off. And you can interchange it for another vehicle and you drive.
You can, so, because that was a complaint in the past was, well, I only have one sticker on one car, you know, and, or it's in my other car. So we're trying to avoid that complaint. This would just get, be something that the convenience center recycling attendant could see when the person pulled up. They don't have it, then they're dumping. The cost of printing these and including them in the tax tickets would be over $8,000. And then the insertion fee is about a penny per envelope. So you're looking at $540, so about $10,000. And I think this would come out of the enterprise fund budget to protect our convenience centers and landfill.
We have to make a decision by.
Probably tonight, because Penny has advised that in order to get them into tax bills and all the logistical issues, she would need to know this week.
Jessica, if you would, surprise the board on your conversations with, I think you talked with, was it Watauga and Ash and some of the surrounding counties close to us and how they do this.
Yeah, so this is actually a replica of what Ash uses and they just have started this or implemented this back. Stokes County's been doing this for quite some time. They have basically a sheet of paper that they put in the windows. Everybody around us does it pretty much, but us. And, and we're getting a lot of out-of-county, out-of-state trash.
Particularly locations that involve Virginia border locations. And in my area, I know certainly Stokes County locations. You, you, have you kind of isolated the ones you think take in other counties' garbage more than others?
Um, I would say that, I mean, if I had to put a number on it, it's probably Low Gap, North Surrey, Flat Rock, get the most complaints. And then while Stokes County was shut down, Westfield was bombarded, especially on Saturdays. And we got a lot of complaints.
Same in Shoals, actually, the guy down there, nice guy running it. He, he said he knew exactly when they opened back up because his weekend garbage loads cut down considerably. And he thought, well, where'd all the garbage go? But then he, the guy comes, it had been coming all this year, doesn't said, well, I won't be seeing you anymore, Sam, because I'm going to take it to Stokes again. You know, and I'd rather have it there during that shutdown and work with them than have it on the side of the road. But it is an enterprise system, our landfill, and it operates and keeps its head above water only on the fee for service that it provides.
For the benefit of the taxpayers.
For the benefit of the taxpayers of Surrey County. For that reason, I just think it's legitimate to, for the most part, put Surrey County garbage in the Surrey County landfill.
Jessica, other than having a sticker on your vehicle, somebody drives a, and does not have a sticker, they're turned away? Is that what you're saying?
If they don't have a sticker at that point, then yes, they would not be allowed to.
Now, we talked about that and that's, my understanding is people make mistakes and they forgot it. First time they come and they don't forget it, I think they ought to get a friendly.
Reminder.
Reminder. You know what, to be honest with you, some people need two friendly reminders. Some people under certain circumstances might even need two or three. But then after that, I think gradually we send the message, hey, if you don't have your sticker, I'm going to ask you where your sticker is every time. And I think we can send that message legitimately and somewhat softly without being overbearing on a person who brought the wrong car or forgot to bring the sticker. That would be my way of implementing.
Yeah, and Ash County had something simpler where they had a soft implementation period, where they basically gave them, I think maybe six months even. Said, hey, we're going to be enforcing it, but you know, not really, I guess, until such date. And then it'll be a hard date.
And how will they receive them? How do they get them?
And we're hoping if, if approved tonight, it could go in the tax ticket.
And mail out your taxes. Are we going to go in and?
So you would have these included in your tax ticket, you would have two there. Now, if you rental property, they'll have to come to the, they'll have to get them from their landlord. Or to get more, you'd have to come to the landfill and show proof of paying your taxes.
So it really shouldn't be a problem if you pay, if you pay your taxes in Surrey County, it shouldn't be a problem getting a sticker.
It should not be an issue.
I'll say as a member of the property committee, I've had several complaints from citizens in Surrey County complaining about this, from chronic violators, and it was in the Low Gap area. I'll just say gently, to, as a citizen of Surrey County, I would want this because, and I also say that there, to be, for us to have a landfill and a system that we have, which is really, really good, comes a certain amount of responsibility. And your responsibility as a citizen is to follow the law and to follow the rules. And if you follow the rules to the benefit of all the citizens that pay taxes in Surrey County, you shouldn't have a problem with this. I can't imagine anyone having a problem with this because they should want the rules followed. And, and that's the responsibility of being a good citizen in this county to the benefit of the taxpayers and the operation of our landfill, which is a tremendous benefit to Surrey County. We don't have to haul our garbage to Carnersville or some other location. So being a good citizen comes responsibility in its respect for the law and the rule of law and the rules and following the rules. And if, I just can't imagine anybody having a problem with this. And so, you know, I, I suppose there could be people out there that would see this as egregious because people always complain about something. But if you, if you appreciate the landfill and the opportunity to take your trash to a recycling center, a good citizen ought to be elated with this, really. And there's no reason why they can't, can't get stickers and, and abide by the rules because it benefits everybody, but. Any more discussion, gentlemen?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I'll certainly make that motion that we put this in, in motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson to instruct the landfill staff to implement the sticker. Okay, second, Commissioner Marion? I mean, Gouins, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, the next item would be the Surrey County fiscal year 2023 budget. And I'll defer to the county manager.
You want me to read through the summary from the budget work session?
Yes, if you would. Shall I read that, Commissioner, County Manager?
You can, I don't mind, but that's up to you.
I'll let you read that.
So the board met on June 6th here in the historic courthouse to consider the recommended budget. Following the board's deliberations, they reached consensus on a number of alterations. The first one was to the Surrey Medical Ministry's allocation. It was actually a decrease of $239,000. That was due to a typo in the recommended budget where the, so the annual amount being allocated, the total amount was allocated. So the commitment is still there, it was just a typo in the budget. Next was to increase the MIS department's allocation by $10,000 to accommodate the next request, public records request system. Next were two decreases, one to Shepherd's House by 3,200 and one to Echo Ministry or the ARC by 1,300. Those are a result of the board coming up with a per-bed amount for those two shelters versus the recommended amount. A $50,000 decrease to Hope Valley. That is in lieu of considering an allocation to Hope Valley from the opioid settlement funds. A $15,000 increase to Yoke Fellow, which works with Second Harvest Food Bank in Mount Erie. They relocated recently out of the Jones Center. So these funds will help them as a one-time allocation for that relocation. A $25,000 decrease for the town of Pilot Mountain. A $50,000 increase to general fund contingency. A $188,125 decrease in salary reserve for a total change of, is a decrease of $431,625. The other items were the tax district changes. One to Elkin City Schools' tax rate decreased to 11.6 cents. Central Surrey Volunteer Fire Department tax rate increased to 8.2 cents. And finally, under debt forgiveness, forgive 25,000 of the remaining debt owned by the town of Pilot Mountain on the Pilot Center loan. In addition to that, I'll just mention once again, attached to the memo that was in the packet from me regarding the hearing is the email from the health director specifically. She had requested $192,496 from Partners. And this is for behavioral health. She found out after the work session that she would only be receiving 78,600, which is a difference of $113,896.
Okay, I'll take the liberty of asking Ms. Ainge if she has any comments on this.
I think behavioral health is needed. So the 113 could either come from our fund balance or if the commissioners would like to take that out of county funds. But it's a bare-bones budget, it's 80-some percent salaries. So there's not a lot of fluff in that. If we don't have the 113, we will not be able to have behavioral health services.
Okay. All right. Do I, I guess I would be looking for a consensus to add this to the list of change items for the county budget that were discussed at the retreat, gentlemen? Commissioner Johnson, you're on the health board. Do you have any recommendation here?
I do not, I would also, would like to support this, 113, 896, sir. Add that to our.
Okay, Commissioner Tucker? Gentlemen? Okay, so we'll add that to our recommended changes for the fiscal year budget. And the amount of 113,000 and some odd change there. I don't remember exactly what that was. 113,896. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Okay, gentlemen. We have the discussion from the county budget workshop and the list of recommended changes. Are there any additional items that you gentlemen would like to to discuss here or bring up? Mr. Johnson?
Not, not at present, but I'll
Okay.
follow in if somebody else has something to say.
Okay, Commissioner Tucker, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Goins? Commissioner Marion? Okay, I certainly don't have any changes to the county budget to suggest tonight. I think that we had some very good budget meetings, and we had a good retreat. I think all the commissioners are very well abreast of the issues facing Suri County and and from a financial perspective and a budgetary perspective. And gentlemen, I would be looking for a motion for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 county budget.
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept the budget as accepted for the 2023, 20, as as presented for the 23, 24 budget calendar year.
With these changes.
These changes.
Okay. Also, the tax district changes, are they in?
Included in the budget orders.
They're included. Okay. I have a motion, so I'm going to go ahead and get a second. Second Commissioner Goins, looking for discussion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, also what's included are the three fee schedule changes for inspections, fire marshal, and parks and recreation.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for discussion. Any discussion?
My understanding, we will not have any budget amendments at least for a little bit after tonight. Is that correct?
Definitely not. Sandy will have some motions to address the personnel side of things.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting, so the board will work through those after closed session.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask the manager, do we have a final tally now? 98, 97? What?
Well, by adding in the Health Department allocation, the total reduction will be 317,729. Is that correct?
Yes. Makes it about 98 million. I can't. Is it? Okay.
I will say, this is the fiscal year budget in a very big binder, quite a lot of information in here. I want to, I want to thank the county staff for a tremendous job this year, as well as the County Board of Commissioners, all the stakeholders. It's certainly a task to develop a county budget and obviously it's difficult to meet all the needs, but we try to prioritize our needs in Suri County in a broad fashion to benefit the taxpayers. And I think that's what this budget has achieved. I want to also make note that this does include a tax decrease by one cent to the Elkin City Schools Tax District. That would go from 12.6 cents to 11.6 cents. Also, there is a tax rate increase for Central Suri Volunteer Fire Department to 8.2 cents. And what what increase was that specifically, Laura? Did that? It was a half a cent? Okay, that was half of a penny for those folks to work on their ISO ratings to benefit homeowners and taxpayers in that district, taxpayers to, for their homeowner's insurance. And so they should realize a much greater benefit in having a lower ISO rating for the fire district. And we hope that achieves that end. So that's all I have, gentlemen. Anything else? What was that number? Oh, it was a half a cent, right?
Oh, you're talking.
Oh, yeah, the total number.
98, 9128,430.
Okay, all right.
If you got a second, Jerry, you have a discussion.
We're still having discussions, Commissioner.
I just simply want to say that you know, our request for funding was far greater than our appropriations, and they typically are. What all that boils down to, and I'm not going to bore people with my opinion about what that means, but simply put, it's you, you can never, ever, I don't think, I've done this, I think about eight, eight, nine times. You can't say yes all the time to everything. If you did, you simply couldn't balance the budget. And if you ever got it balanced and you said yes the next fiscal year, it'd be unbalanced again. And what that would mean would be taxes would continue to go up, 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 up to the point. There would be a breaking point with, that would be no longer sustainable, I think. And when we pick and choose, I don't even like that terminology on this budget because we, it's not picking who we like the most. It's picking where we hate to cut the most. I mean, and everybody can't get everything. I think our budget last year was 92 or 93, 92 something, almost 93 million, rounded off. We jumped it up to pushing that in between 98 and 99 this year. We did that without raising taxes. We've provided that much more service for Suri County citizens. And we did that without taking the 39 or 40% that do pay property taxes and giving them an increase. And I think that's what our job is. I don't think it's to say yes all the time. I think it's to discern the request versus the appropriation that we could finally grant. And I'll say this. You know, I don't think that the rural counties particularly like Suri, where this is not Chicago or New York City or Los Angeles or San Diego or some of the bigger cities. I think our core functions are public safety, public health, the benefit of the elderly, the frail, the children, the debt that goes along with the Division of Social Services and their departments, the EMS, when you fall on your face and you can't get up, somebody's got to look after you. And then the many other things that we contribute toward those folks that can't contribute anything for themselves. Now, once you get past those things, I think the rest of it's just icing on the cake. And sometimes that's where we get into the no or the maybe, or the maybe not until next year category. That's the way I see it, and that's the way I see your job. I appreciate all the hard work the misters put into this budget, and I'm telling you, we put in some hard work. We put in hours and hours and hours, each and every one of these folks sitting here, and we might not have got it all right. But by golly, we did the very best we could, and I'm not ashamed of this budget. I'm thankful that we were able to come to an agreement on all of it. And in order to get an agreement, sometimes you got to give a little, take a little. And I think each and every one of us gave a little and took a little, and we came with a unanimous decision with almost a $99 million budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tucker. I'll also say that a lot of this budget and and the northward trajectory of the county budget is inflationary. It's it's common all across everything that we do and the goods and services that Suri County has to provide, and and we're seeing it across the nation. So a lot of this is inflationary. I want to say too, in closing, that for my comments, that I've been on the board since 2010, and we have never had a property tax increase since that time. Suri County continues to be a trading center for goods and services. And our revenues are very strong from the sales tax perspective, property tax evaluations, and economic development continue to improve in Suri County. So I think that's all around, all the way around good for our citizens, and I'm very proud of the fact that we were able to do this and have been able to do it for many, many years without raising property taxes. And those are the people that I continue to look after, the people, the widows and the people who are on fixed incomes that have to choose between paying their property taxes and buying their heating oil, their medicine, and their groceries and paying their bills. Those are the people that are inordinately, inordinately affected by property tax increases and bear the biggest burden. So those are the people that I continue to focus on. Okay, gentlemen, any more discussion?
What I'll say is we appreciate our citizens for paying our taxes, budget at 97%. And reflecting that over 99%, that's huge. And that's, that's where you get that gravy at, too. And we appreciate our, our citizens for paying, paying our taxes. We appreciate, appreciate our citizens for buying goods in our, at Lowe's and Walmart and everywhere else, but also online. That's, that's, that's a big trend, and that helps a lot, too. When we make these decisions, it's about sustainability. Can you sustain it? You know, if you do it this year, things like salary increases, it becomes something that you have to sustain from now on. And that's something that we have to look at. So it's, it's not, it's not easy. And we, like Mr. Tucker said, we do the very best that we can. Appreciate our citizens and appreciate all of you being here tonight.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank our county staff, a lot of hard work, long hours. Appreciate these gentlemen here. We, a lot of good discussions, give and take, and you know, we've, end of the day, we've agreed on probably 98% of the, what went on and what we didn't completely agree on, we went along with. But a lot, a lot of good discussions and you know, the budget did go up five million this year. And but like Commissioner Goins said, people paying their taxes and being good stewards and commissioners being fiscally, fiscally responsible. Washington DC should take note. They, you know, if you ran your budget in your household like Washington DC runs theirs, you wouldn't, you wouldn't live in your house long. So we, we do the best we can, and we think we done the best we could for the citizens, and I'm happy with the budget the way it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And the budget is a pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. County Manager, is that it?
That's all we have. A request for closed session for legal and personnel.
Okay, general county business, gentlemen. I'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I think a lot of thank yous have been already stated. I'll add my thank yous, especially to our county manager and all those that work with him. There's quite, quite a few there. He make, he runs this county, and we're elected officials. She'll receive a lot of information, even some advice now and then on how things ought to be and such as, and I want to thank him personally, and I've tried to do that quite often. Forgive me if I don't, but thank you and all those that work with you for a job well done. And Mr. Chairman, you're right. We had not one IO to talk about raising taxes in any fashion or form in the eight years that I've been on, and and I'm glad that we are very frugal and try, try our best to be as conservative as we can. And again, thanks to for all these numbers being put in front of us, and and we approved the biggest percentage of them. We just had a little handful to discuss, and thank you again.
Commissioner Tucker?
Nothing more than thank everybody for coming, participating and participating in county government. That's kind of the way we do our business, and it's always nice to have folks coming to participate along with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goins?
Thank you to our county staff for hard work and to our department heads. Just appreciate all that y'all do for our citizens.
Mr. Marion?
Well, thank everybody for being here tonight, and I brought it up last meeting. We had the Ground Steak Festival last Saturday in Dobson. Great crowd. People came from all over and were impressed at all the vendors that were here. Had beautiful weather. It was a good crowd all day long. So I see that coming, being an annual thing, maybe expanding later day or so, but hope all the fathers had a good day yesterday. And have a safe week this week. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take about a five minute break, and but I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session now. Motion, Commissioner Marion, go into closed session. Commissioner Goins, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We will go into closed session after about five or 10 minutes here. Opposed? The ayes have it. We will go into closed session after about five or 10 minutes here.
You good? We're good? Okay, all right, we are back in open session. And I think the Commissioner Goins has some personnel motions to make in regards to the county budget.
I'm gonna make these covering all. This motion is to instruct the Assistant County Manager to approve the position classification plan for the 2023-2024 budget. By making changes and adjusting salaries according to the recommendations in the approved budget, providing a five percent cost of living increase to all graded employees and elected officials affected July 1, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion of Commissioner Goins. A second? Second Commissioner Marion, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Is that good, Sandy? Okay, all right, I think the county attorney has an item.
Yes, sir. Earlier in the year, the county surplus the old Westfield school site. And we obtained a offer from Fresh Start Ministries for $150,000, which was tentatively approved by the board, and there was no upset bid received. Following the upset period, as a result of a title exam, we determined that unbeknownst to either the Stokes County Board of Education or the County of Surrey, the Stokes County Board of Education owned a one-third interest in that property. In order to deliver title to the church, we approached the school board attorney and received a response from the Board of Education that they would like one-third of the net proceed. We rejected that proposal, and they came back asking for $15,000. We also rejected that proposal. I'm looking to this board in order to resolve this matter to make an offer to a full and, I mean, a final offer to the Stokes Board of Education to resolve the matters and deliver title jointly executed by the Stokes Board of Education and this board so that we can bring this matter to a close.
Okay, Commissioner Tucker, that's in your district. I'll defer to you.
I think this is a interesting situation. This title search that we did even have to do voluntarily did on our part as being good citizens and good government to give a clear title to the brand-new buyer, Fresh Start Ministries. We found about 100 years ago with some very fuzzy, old-worded deeds that Stokes County may own fifth, a third of the property that we have over there, which is around 12 acres or something like that. And usually these matters, as I am told, are usually just taking care of it in short order from government entity to government entity, and so we simply ask that they relinquish any right that was 100 years old. They'd never kept up any of the cost of this 12 acres. They'd never had any input into any income for 100 years or more. But to our surprise, Stokes County Board of Education said, "No. If you found some evidence that we think might lead credence to the fact that we own a third of this property, then we want a third of what you sold it for 100 years later now that we've settled it." Quite honestly, I think that's outrageous. I think that's poor government at work. I think Surrey County is obligated to go through with what was a just and honorable sale to the highest bidder that was executed here in a closed bid and it's subject to upset bid. And the Fresh Start Ministries, who are a bunch of wonderful people who are trying to get a church, are now living in hardship of a rented property in Pilot Mountain, and they're about to be forced to go away somewhere else. And the Stokes County Board of Education refuses to relinquish. And we have made them a substantial offer. We've tried to work with their attorney, and our attorneys worked with their attorney, and we've not gotten anywhere but... And if it were not the fact that the church was on the hook and struggling to find a place to go, I'd say if we own the county, if we own the property, and we're just gonna let it sit there, I'd say let it sit there for another 100 years. I'd be stubborn enough, wouldn't budge an inch because they're wrong. However, consider that I want to get a clear deed and title to this church, who has bought it in good faith with a lot of people with high expectations that Surrey County Government will do better than that. And if it's all about money to the Stokes County Board of Education, as much as it behooves me to do so, I'm gonna make a motion that we offer them another $5,000 total of, not to exceed. Take it or leave it. And it will show our good faith on trying to do this deal and close this financial matter up and get the church their deed. And I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need that confirmed in the motion?
I think the motion is sufficient. I'm wondering whether Commissioner Tucker would like to add to it that if the Board of Education does not accept the $5,000 that we offer to lease the property to the church for a dollar a year.
I will add that to my motion. If the Stokes County Board of Education refuses our gratuitous offer, then I will add to that motion that we then offer to the church, who has tried to buy this property and relocate in good faith, an opportunity to lease it. And we will offer that lease rate of one-third back to Stokes County Board of Education. And that lease rate would be, Mr. Attorney?
Dollar a year.
One for $1 a year.
So Stokes County would get 33 cents a year?
Stokes County would then get 33 cents a year.
Okay, all right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion Commissioner Goins, Second Commissioner Tucker, all those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.